All right, I'd like to call County of Otero, New Mexico, especially in meeting agenda. Could I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Griffin, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maydoli.
Here.
Commissioner B.
Here.
Commissioner Griffin.
Here.
All right, could I have approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Could I get a second? All second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, say nay. Koi, can you hear me?
All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
No, all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. All right, new business. This is request approval of resolution number 04-13-20/10859. Resolution of self-isolation of county employees and elected officials who have traveled out of state. At this time, I'm going to have Michael read the whole resolution to where everybody can hear it and make sure everybody understands it. Michael?
Yes, sir. Whereas NMSA 1978-437-1 gives the Board of County Commissioners the power to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote the prosperity, and improve the morals, order, comfort, and convenience to the inhabitants of Otero County; whereas NMSA 1978-438-18 gives the Board of County Commissioners the power to represent their county and to manage the interests of Otero County; whereas NMSA 1978-438-13 provides the Board of County Commissioners the power at any session to make such orders concerning the property belonging to the county as they may deem expedient; whereas there is a worldwide outbreak of a novel coronavirus known as SARS-CoV-2 and also known as COVID-19; whereas the United States Secretary of Health and Human Services on January 31, 2020, declared a public health emergency under Section 319 of the Public Health Service Act, 42 U.S. Code, Section 247D regarding COVID-19; whereas the President of the United States on March 13, 2020, issued Proclamation 9994, proclamation declaring a national emergency concerning the novel coronavirus COVID-19 outbreak published in the Federal Register on March 18, 2020; whereas the Governor of New Mexico on March 11, 2020, issued Executive Order 2020-004, order declaring a state of public health emergency and invoking the powers provided by the All Hazard Emergency Management Act and the Emergency Licensing Act published in the New Mexico Register on March 24, 2020; and she renewed that order by Executive Order 2020-022, issued on April 6, 2020, which has not yet been published in the New Mexico Register; whereas the Board of County Commissioners on March 27, 2020, approved Resolution Number 032720/10856, Declaration of Health Emergency for Otero County; whereas the New Mexico Department of Health has encouraged New Mexicans to avoid travel to other states and to self-isolate upon returning from such travel. Now therefore being enacted by the Board of County Commissioners of Otero County, New Mexico, that, one, employees and elected officials who travel outside the state of New Mexico shall upon their return to New Mexico, report to their supervisor or the county manager, one, the fact of their trip, and, two, the date of their return; two, employees and elected officials who travel outside of the state of New Mexico shall, one, self-isolate for 14 days after the return to New Mexico, and, two, take sick or annual leave for the time they miss work; three, employees and elected officials who travel outside of the state of New Mexico shall not enter any county building for 14 days after their return to New Mexico; four, the provisions of Paragraph 2 of this resolution shall not apply to employees of the Road Department living on the Otero Mesa when such out-of-state travel is solely to Dell City, Texas; five, the provisions of Paragraphs 2 and 3 of this resolution shall not apply to travel to the state of Texas by, one, detention officers of the Otero County Detention Center when transporting persons to and from the Hudson County Jail or other facilities in that state; or, two, employees of any department who are domiciled in El Paso County, Texas; six, employees and elected officials shall report to their supervisor or the county manager any violations of this resolution; seven, this resolution shall expire 30 days after its enactment by the Board unless further extended by an order issued by the county manager. Enacted April 13, 2019, oh, sorry about that, fix that, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners of Otero County, New Mexico.
All right, I'd like to open this for discussion.
Yeah, Michael, with this being a resolution, it has no legal ground, does it?
Commissioner, a resolution, laws passed by the county are in the form of ordinances, and this is not in the form of an ordinance. So it's not a law.
So it's just what the commissioners feel like the county employees or elected officials should do, but if they choose not to do it, it really doesn't matter anyway, does it?
Well, the commission does have the authority to control public buildings, but it would not be something that would be, that we could go seek, like, say, a violation in court about.
So if they, if the county official leaves and goes to Arizona and comes back and just goes ahead and says, well, that might be the resolve of the commission, but I'm going to go into a county building anyway, then what ground would the county even have to enforce such a resolution? Are we going to call the sheriff and have that person thrown in jail?
That's a possibility, Koi, if the violation is...
I'm not talking to you, Gerald, I'm talking to Michael.
Um, I'm not, I... I don't know how it would go about being enforced, Commissioner.
It wouldn't be, it can't legally be enforced, you know? What are we going to, are we going to dispatch the sheriff and say, Steve Boyle has an emergency trip to Arizona and comes back and says that resolution stupid anyway, but then he goes ahead and goes to work, are we going to have, are we going to have that person, I mean, how are we? We can't enforce it anyway. I mean, we're not that, we're not that good at it yet, I don't think, are we? I mean, legally, you can. Legally, the county would be too, because we don't set the law. It's not like, Gerald, it's not like you can, we can make laws, you know? We make resolutions, if the county's resolved, if we can pass, you know, what we feel is the resolve of the county, is the general consensus of the county, but that doesn't mean that you can set, you can make laws. I mean, the governor would love to right now. I'm sure that she would be full in support of this resolution that you have in mind, Gerald, but the county doesn't have the legal ground to legally enforce this. We can say, we think it would be our best idea, that's what a resolution is.
Koi, this is no different than the resolutions that were pushed when, into detaining the migrants here or any of the other resolutions that were made. This is for the safety...
Exactly, exactly.
Koi, listen...
I know, that was a bit bad of the county, and we respect the state and the federal government...
Koi, you will not interrupt me.
...of the county, but legally, am I wrong, Michael, legally? I mean, is anything that I said here not right, Michael? Am I off stage?
Um, I'm sorry, there was some crosstalk. Which point are you asking about?
I mean, as far as the resolution goes, if we're doing up the resolution, just like with the, with the migrant, the migrant deal, you know, where that was the resolve of the county, that we had want the federal government moving migrants inside of our county, but that's just the resolve of the county in which we want to have it respected, but legally, we couldn't enforce that.
In those cases, correct...
If the federal government wanted to defy the resolution, they can, just like an elected official could defy the resolution, the fed resolution that we're considering right now, and we don't have any legal ground to enforce it. That is unless we pass an ordinance and get the judge to sign it.
Well, if we need to do it into a law situation or wherever there's a ticketing or a fine or whatever, arrest it, Koi, we can, we can go to that process. All this is...
That's not how it's been going.
Koi, you'll listen to me and not interrupt me, or I'll disconnect you.
Oh, God, okay, I'm listening.
Please listen and just have a little bit of politeness, is all I'm asking.
Okay, I'm listening with a little bit of politeness.
All this is, is a safety matter for Otero County residents. This is the, what we feel, okay, I'm not going to say we, because I'm not speaking for the others, I'm talking about for me, this is how I feel that this is going to be the safest thing, another one of the safety factors for Otero County. If you decide you want to travel all over, I don't have any problem with that, you just need to take the safety precautions when you come home, so we don't take a chance of spreading this virus. Is that, is that asking too much, or is that too, whatever you want to call it earlier, communist speaking?
Well, yeah, it is, in my opinion, it is. I think this whole deal is, you know, I have a difference of opinion on it, just like whenever you and Lori declared a state of emergency in regards to the coronavirus, and we didn't even have one single case of it inside of the county. My position is the same as it's always been. How many cases in Otero County do we have now? One?
Four.
Four, wow, man. Okay.
Four is four too many.
Just like I said before, in the last meeting that we had, I believe that by passing this sort of stuff, declaring the state of emergency, it just creates more fear and panic and unrest in the people that have elected us into these offices. Look at us right now, we're completely polarized by a virus that is less lethal than the common flu here.
I don't think we've seen the end of this yet, Koi. I think it's going to outrun the flu. But again, that's my own opinion. Again, I'm only thinking about trying to be the safest thing we can for the county.
Well, you know, I mean, I know, I just, I didn't, you just, I don't know, just put my resolution up and just blink me out particularly, you know? Because I know where, I know what this is about, you know? You know, I'm traveling, doing what I'm doing, and we can't even have a commission meeting this month. The first time in probably the history of Otero County that we've never had a county commission meeting, but yet you can call it special emergency meeting in regards to this? It just, I don't know, I mean, the first, when I first heard about this, I thought, well, is this, is this coming from the governor's office? Because this is, this is exactly the way Michelle Gresham's acting with all of her restrictions, the, the sky is falling, you know?
It's not political.
Koi, this isn't a political issue. This is safety. If we could save one person from getting this virus, again, it's not pointed at you or anyone. If you want to do your traveling deal, your speaking, that's great, do it, but just take the precautionary measures when you come back home, that's all, that's, anyone is asking of anybody that goes out of state.
Okay, well, why is this, why El Paso? Why is this, why do you have a free pass to go to El Paso? Do they not have any, anything in El Paso?
You do not have a free pass to go to El Paso. If you're an employee of the county...
I'm not an exemption hitter.
No. If you had, if you're an employee of Otero County and you live in El Paso, you can come back and forth to come to your job.
But if you want to go grocery shopping down there, you can't?
What do you want me to say?
I mean, is that, is that, I mean, is that, if you want to, if you want to go to the sports club down there, you can't go to sports clubs in El Paso, but if you live down there and you're working in part of our counties and you have free to go to sports clubs and go anywhere, these places are contagious and you still come to work?
That's the way it's wrote up, isn't it, Pamela?
Yes, sir.
That's the way it's wrote up?
Does that make sense, Gerald?
What are you going to do? You're going to fire the employee from Otero County that works, that lives in El Paso?
No, I say you just don't put a resolution like this in place to begin with.
No, you would think that that, you would think that that...
What, if you're truly concerned about the contagious factor of it, and we have people that are living outside, going to, that live outside of the county, live in El Paso County, and they're coming into Otero County, and you're really that concerned about, about this virus, wouldn't you just tell that person that they need to just stay home? I mean, it doesn't make sense. If it logically and sensibly makes sense, then I could understand it, but...
It doesn't logically and sensibly make sense to leave the state of New Mexico during a pandemic either, but, you know, he went ahead and did that.
Koi, you would think that the employee of Otero County would be smart enough and hopefully safe enough to not take any extra chances like that, but that's no different if you're living right here and you go to Walmart to buy a gallon of milk, okay? But when you're traveling out of states, to out-of-state deals, you're exposing to all the other cases around.
Yeah, okay, all right, but then why are there exemptions there? Why would you, why would you make, if we're these that are living outside, living on that side of the line, why would you make exemptions for them if it's really that serious of the deal? I mean, if it's truly about infectious and contagious, then why, why, why would you even allow those people to come into the county? Why would you even allow people from our state to come into Otero County, you know? I mean, are we going to, are we going to pass a resolution by allowing anybody from any other state to travel into Otero County?
They're going to, the state does not have that law right now. Pamela, how many, how many employees live in El Paso?
I, I don't know, I think it may be about three, and they're all deputies in Chaparral area, and Tom Porter just texted me, we have one road employee for the Pinyon area that lives in Chavez.
Can we have them take a voluntary test, just to see? Is that, is that illegal?
Well, if they keep going back and forth, then a test today may not be valid two weeks from now.
That's true.
So...
And Matt has informed me that the tests, sometimes they're, they give false negatives until it's progressed further in the person's system.
That's encouraging.
And also one thing that I, I, my question I'd like to ask, because what if the county employees have a drift that they're trying to locate and say, to Arizona, and they go on it, they come back, and now we make them still fourteen for fourteen days, does that mean that they stay home and we pay them?
He didn't read the resolution.
Well, we, Pamela, we already have that, don't we? If the employee goes out of state and they come back, right now, don't they, didn't you tell me you had an employee that was going on vacation?
We have an employee that's staying home, self-isolating for fourteen days, and as written in this resolution, it's on his tab.
Right.
If we had a county employee that had a death of a family, and they had to go to Arizona to the funeral, then they would have to be faced with two decisions. They would either have to miss the funeral, or they would have to miss two weeks worth of work.
I already know people who have missed funerals out of state for this, believe it or not. Everybody's making sacrifices.
Did you hear what Lori said?
No.
I said, I've got, I've got friends who have actually already missed...
I still can't hear you, Lori, can you talk into your microphone?
I'm, I'm getting closer, sorry about that. The, the situation is, is I've got friends who have actually not gone to funerals out of state because of this, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, I don't know, like I told you before, you could be right, I could be right, Gerald could be right, I, I don't know who's right, we'll figure it out at the end of it, I'm sure, but the precautionary measures, I think, I mean, it, it's really no, no skin off my nose to, to do what it takes to make sure that I don't become part of the problem. I don't, I don't want to be part of the problem, ever.
Yeah, but what if, you know, what if you're wired to say, you know, if somebody might, a county employee might have an uncle or an ancestor that they're extremely close to that died from another state, and now we're going to pass a resolution that's going to restrict him from going to a funeral, or give him up two weeks of, of their pay?
That's the sad part of it, Koi, but this is how this is wrote up.
But we, but we have to consider all angles of a resolution like this, Gerald, you know? You have to, you have to take these things into consideration. We don't just run a, run a resolution through, and, you know, that all of a sudden we have a bunch of county employees that are going to jail, you know? We have to, we have to be considerate and think about how this outcome thing is going to impact them.
It is, that is, it's a serious deal, and you're talking about a funeral, you would hope that either, if there's somebody that close, that they will set the funeral date whenever this lifts. This is not a planned thing, there's nothing easy or nice about this whole thing, Koi, it's strictly a safety for the whole people of Otero County.
But you know, Gerald, just like I just said earlier, why don't you look at the data and the statistics on the common flu, you know? There's fewer people than the coronavirus is. I mean, seriously, so, we don't go to these measures over the flu.
Well, Koi, I watched the ABC News this morning, the news broadcasters are saying that when this coronavirus gets into its full deal, it will be 10 times worse than any common cold flu that has ever hit.
And do you know how the media sensationalizes things, especially right now? You know, I mean, the media is going to sensationalize this, the media is agenda-driven, Gerald, instead of looking at the media, look at just the numbers. The numbers don't lie, the media does, you know? And for us to pass a resolution like this, this is really, it's going to be halted on the county officials, and what about just the residents of Otero County, that would be passed if they're on the county employees and their elected officials, but what about the people of Otero County? Are they free to travel wherever they want to go and come back? Are we going to, are we going to pass a law that's going to keep everybody inside of county limits? I mean, what's the difference between the guy that's working at the road shop or a guy that's working for our local workers? You know, I mean, why, why is that with the county? Why, if it's this big of a deal, then why not put the whole county up on there?
Well, who knows, that may be coming later. Koi, let me ask you a question.
Okay.
Our President Trump, you adore him, you idolize him, he's a great man, he...
I don't, I don't, hey, stop, I don't idolize him, I don't adore him, I support him because he's a great president, he's doing a good job, that's why I support him, that's why I get behind him. So I don't idolize him, Gerald, you can, you can change your language.
Okay. He has asked everybody to stay home, do not travel, do not do this, and you're going totally against everything he's saying.
Okay, yeah.
Are you not?
He is.
Are you not?
Go ahead, sorry. Were you done?
Go ahead, I'm ready to...
You want me to respond to that? You know, we have a president in office that has to take, you know, advice and counsel from guys like this Dr. Fauci guy, who I believe is agenda-driven, and if Trump were to say, this is a hot watch, so every person that died from the coronavirus, the blood would be on his head, and the politic and the progressive left would use it to attack him to the better end, you know? I mean, I have my own opinion on what's going on here, you've got your own opinion on yours, and do I support my president? Absolutely, I do. Do I, do I think you put the American people first? Absolutely, but that's a bigger picture than just a picture that, you know, maybe we all think differently.
So he doesn't, he doesn't put the people of Otero County first, is that what he just said, or am I wrong?
You can ask him that question.
Does that mean that we don't put the safety of the people of Otero County first? I mean, isn't that kind of our job?
True, 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 we put the safety of our people of Otero County first. Why did we pass the resolution in regards to the common flu? It's more lethal and it's a bigger threat than the coronavirus is.
Well, they don't call the common flu a pandemic, so...
I know, the media does it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick...
Will you believe it? Go ahead, I'll tell you.
Um, Sheriff Black just texted me, and we were talking about El Paso residents, and it would affect 13 of his deputies.
See?
He what?
He has 13 deputies that live out of state.
Gerald, this is going to affect a bunch of people inside of the county. We have four confirmed cases inside of the county of a virus that's less of a threat... of a virus that's less of a threat than the common flu. Just think about it.
I have, Coy, and then, and people have to be responsible for themselves. I understand that, and making their smart decisions. Out of 10 people, you'll have one that will be responsible, the other nine will not be. Does that make sense?
And is it up to you to make everybody responsible?
It's not up to me to make everybody responsible. I am just trying to protect the, the health and the safety of Otero County.
Well, I think the health and the safety of Otero County lies more in the hands of people who are not clearly the best of parents, parents, like well...
So you're saying we ought to just all go out and just start gathering and doing our thing and don't pay any attention?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying if you gotta start a nose and you feel bad, stay home. Don't wash your hands, don't get around other people. Just do what we've always done. And we've always, I mean, that's, that's kind of the government rule, isn't it? If you get sick, stay home. Don't, don't go to the grandma that's got COPD or lung cancer. You know, yeah, we need to be cautious about this. We need to, we need to be used to this here. But as far as the government stepping in and creating mandates like you want to create, I think it's not fair.
Well, I appreciate your opinion, Coy.
Well, you know, it's, it's not personal. It's not personal, it is just my opinion on it. I'm not covering that you personally, but I, I do think you're wrong in trying to put this resolution up because it's gonna affect a lot of people. It's gonna affect a lot of people of the county. To put restrictions on the people of the county, the employees of the county, to travel out of state, but yet, everybody else in the county is free to roam? I mean, what, what sense does that make, Gerald?
You know, I can't, the guy down there washing cars on the, or raking up leaves, I can't account for them. I would hope that they would be responsible enough, and if it comes down to a deal that we're gonna have to... I keep waiting, any day. Coy, listen to what I have to say.
Elected officials and county employees would have the same side of responsibility?
Welcome to my position.
This is just the start of it, Coy. This is just the start.
No, I, I just agree. I think the most virus is yours. Whenever the temperatures change and things warm up, viruses don't do well in warm temperatures. You know, unless you're watching MSNBC and then they're gonna tell you that this deal's gonna escalate and it's warm viruses, you know? It's not, it's just common knowledge. The flu is a winter bug, it's a summer bug. We're rural county. We're a partially populated county. We don't have the same threat that they do in New York City where it's...
How many years? How many years was he in medical school again?
Well, okay, I, I, I agree with you some on that, but think about it like this. Okay, it's, it's, whatever the temperature is in New York City right now, but those body temperatures are still 98 degrees, and that virus is living.
So do you usually catch the flu in the middle of July? Or do you catch it in January?
Well, maybe do you catch it in, in April when you got the sinus infection? That doesn't matter. What I'm saying, the vi, the disease... The disease still will live in you on the temperature. And they haven't proven yet on that high temperature deal. I hope that you're right. When it gets hotter, it kills it. But is that really gonna happen?
Well, so, so what happens whenever those 13 deputies that live in the house...
You realize this is gonna keep going, right?
What happens whenever the commission...
And I have to go back to work.
And those guys saying, you know what? I'm gonna go to work anyway. What happens then?
And based on this resolution, they do get to continue to go to work. And Carolyn, our department heads are all listening. She has three employees that will be affected.
We've already said.
But you know, I mean, for those 13 deputies that live in Chaveral, that's, that's for you to go to wherever they want to go. You know, that's for you to go to San Francisco or San Diego or New York City. But yet, the other, the other deputies that live just aside of the county life, uh, they, they gotta stay in the county. It just, it makes no sense.
Well, anything that's gonna try to take a chance of saving somebody's life makes sense to me, Coy. That's, that's all I can tell you on it. That's how I feel, and I, I understand, uh, we have employees, and it's gonna affect, uh, we're gonna have to cross that bridge and figure it out. But it, we've gotta take precautionary matters for everybody else.
So are you gonna, are you gonna start like a hotline where county employees can call in if they want another employee if they left the state? I mean, is that, is that, how are we gonna find out? If the county employee just went off to Phoenix for a weekend with his family to visit, you know, somebody in his family? How are we gonna, are we gonna, are we gonna start encouraging county employees to dial one another?
I'm not saying that. Again, I would, I would hope all of our county employees, they're the best people out there. They're gonna have the self-integrity, they're not gonna take stupid chances on that. They understand what is, this risk is right now.
Well, if that's your feeling, then why even pass a resolution? Why don't you just back off this enough and county employees that if they feel like they're getting sick or they get a seizure or they got a body nose, then, you know, they, they stay home? Or, you know, I mean, they don't put themselves at risk. Why don't we, why don't we give people a little bit of personal freedom and a little bit of personal responsibility without trying to be their brother? And, and, and put stuff like this in place? You know? I mean, honestly, though, look, again, what I said earlier, what happens when one of the county employees has to go to a funeral out of state? Or needs to go to a funeral out of state, wants to go to a funeral out of state? Now they've either got to stay home and miss the funeral or they gotta go two weeks worth of work, like, worth of wages that they can't afford to bear?
Is, is this a life, a life-saving decision right there?
Is, is this a life-saving resolution?
It could very well be, Coy.
Yeah.
Pamela, we had talked about, um, to come down to, to our employees on admin leave. The last thing I want, I don't want any of our employees, I understand the situation in El Paso. Would that be an option for them?
Well, you would have to make it fair to all employees and offer for self-isolation admin leave. It wouldn't deter anybody from traveling because they know they get paid for two weeks to be at home. But you could do, you could do it.
I, I just, I just don't think that this is a, I mean, again, I don't think this is a good resolution to pass. So if this all just directed towards me, then I will, I will sell quarantine when I get home for 14 days if that will make, um, everybody sleep better at night. But to do it to the whole county, I don't, I don't agree with.
Coy, this isn't directed directly at you.
If you would be willing, Gerald, to not keep pushing this resolution forward, I'll, I will sell quarantine for 14 days whenever I get back to Otero County. But just because I'm out here doing what I'm doing, I don't want the rest of the people, the rest of the county employees to have to suffer because I'm out here doing what I'm doing.
Well, what you're doing, that is, that's your choice, Coy. So that, that's not the choices of the other county employees. We've gotta get a little guideline, set base rules going here to have a little bit of control. That's where we're going. Well, that's where I'm going, that's what I'm wanting to do. So, again, this has nothing to do with you. This is a deal came up that it's gonna have to... You might, you might have been the deal that sparked off the situation where it made me start thinking about it, you know? Hey, I wanted to go to Houston. Listen, listen, I am not...
You're getting all the people back home. I'm sure you're getting a lot of them, you know? And I could probably name every person that's been sending emails, but, you know? I don't know, Gerald, I mean, honestly, man. Why, why put stuff like this? And, and, and going back to the legality of that? We can't afford this anyways if, if, if...
And what difference does it make?
Road shop has its open eye in Phoenix, and he goes to a funeral, and he comes back, and he goes, you know what? I, that, the resolution is stupid. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna go back to work. We can't keep people going back to work.
So what is the answer on that?
Well, I, I believe Michael already said it's not an ordinance.
But we can, we can make regulations for our staff on a regular basis. You know, like, you passed one about where people park things out behind the building a while back. And if somebody was disobeying that, I, we'd discipline them, you know, like if they got a direct order. I mean, but it's not something we could take to court directly, like, like we could, like the ordinance on junk cars or...
But if we implement this into...
If you wanted this up that it's gonna have teeth in it, Gerald, then you would pass an order like that, and then you would have to have the, the, the resolve that if somebody, a county employee did break it, now you would send it to court. Now you thought you'd punish them, you'd come up with five and a punishment process to punish anybody that left the state. Is that what you would be willing to do?
Can we get this implemented into the county policy?
It takes a lot to do that.
To change an ordinance or to create a new ordinance, we have to advertise for at least two weeks. So it's not a quick process.
Then there needs to be public hearings.
Yes, you have to hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
At least one.
So, and, and it's not cheap.
Gerald, let's just have confidence in the county employees. Let's give the people the benefit of the doubt that they're gonna be responsible. Let's not try to be the good stopper.
Nobody, nobody's trying to be a stopper.
Better county!
This is just us making a suggestion so that the other employees don't end up getting sick if somebody has it and they don't even know it. That's all. It's just, it's a suggestion, just like we, just like the governor did, just like anybody else did.
I mean, honestly, this is a very good message from Otero County Board of Commissioners. And all.
Is there any other discussion on this?
I wish I could think of something else to say, but I can't, I'm out.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to request approval of resolution number 04-13-20/108-59. Resolution on the self-isolation of county employees and elected officials who have traveled, traveled out of state.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
All right. At the end of all the discussions, we have a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we are done.
No, you need, second.
Can I get a second? A second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay? Never mind. Oh, he said aye?
Here's this for signature.
So, are you turning off the air?
I'll stop it right.